And everybody. Before we get started tonight, I would like to welcome Remco Brahm to our Chaplain from the City of Milton Police and Fire to lead us in our invocation.
Our God in heaven, we welcome your presence here tonight at the beginning of this meeting, and we thank you that you are a never-ending and bottomless source of divine wisdom and grace and mercy for those who seek it. And we ask that your divine wisdom flow in rich measure tonight to the mayor and city council and city leaders assembled here tonight, and that your grace and mercy flows to all the families and businesses that call Milton home. We pray that you especially be near to those who are broken-hearted, that are struggling with grief and addiction and adversity tonight, and that you also be near our high school and middle school students who are in the throes of testing this week and are stressed out. And we pray for your protection over our city, that you would keep out all manner of evil and falsehood and violence. We commit ourselves afresh to you tonight and commit this meeting into your hands, and we thank you for the riches of your grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Hopefully, some of you guys may be your first time in our new facility, so I hope you like it. We're very proud of it. It's a, I think it's, it has a Milton feel, so hopefully, it's you as a citizens, it's your facility, so we're proud for everybody. So I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, April 24th, 2017, to order. Sudi, if you'll please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 24th, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everybody tonight. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item, the agenda.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 17-095.
Okay. Our staff has recommended that we move agenda item number 17-103, well, the nomination of a Board of Zoning Appeals member to after the consent agenda, to get that done beforehand, and move agenda items number 17-092, consideration, considerations of revisions to plat process Chapter 50 subdivisions, and 17-093, planning commission duties under unfinished business to the first two items under the zoning agenda. Is there anything else, any counsel or?
Mayor, just a quick clarification. I think it's agenda item number 17-102 for an appointee to the zoning appeals. You said 103.
Okay.
Just make sure that was there. Yeah. And move that one.
Okay. Do I have an approval, motion for approval of the agenda as read?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second, Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, Sudi. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage, engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversations. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any general public comment?
We do have two this evening, sir.
Okay.
And the first one is Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 15625 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Good evening, council. Tonight, I am obliged to address comments made at last week's city council working session. These comments disrespected our planning commission and again demonstrated that certain city council members are little more than agents for developers. Frankly, I was stunned by the assertion that land use decisions in Milton should be left to developers. In arguing to limit the involvement of the planning commission in the plating process, the following statement was made, and I quote, "I will go to three or four cardiologists to obtain an opinion of what needs to be done, but I am not going to go down to the corner to my cousin Mike and ask him if I should get a triple bypass. Leave it to the professionals," unquote. The council member went on to say that planning commission involvement in plating would turn an objective process into a subjective process. I am stunned that a council member would assert that the planning commission is composed of unqualified non-professionals who make subjective decisions. Such assertions are insulting and offensive. Moreover, they bear no resemblance to reality. The truth is that our planning commission is composed of seven dedicated, smart, and seasoned professionals, not a bunch of cousin Mikes. More than any other entity in Milton, the planning commission understands the original vision of Milton. The planning commission has shown refreshing independence. Members actually take seriously the input of citizens unlike certain council members. Members have taken an oath to uphold Milton's laws, they understand their judicial role, and consistently apply objective criteria to reach decisions. The same cannot be said of certain council members. During the Ebenezer rezoning, two council members openly promoted the developer's position, thereby violating their duty of judicial impartiality. In another instance, a council member finagled a second plating hearing for a political patron. A developer got a second day in court where three council members, all with ties to the developer, changed their original votes on the plating. So to question the objectivity and the integrity of the planning commission is the height of hypocrisy. I trust the planning commission much more than so-called development professionals. Leaving land use decisions to the developers is letting the inmates run the asylum. I want to remind council of several instances where these so-called professionals have demonstrated gross incompetence and/or a serious lack of integrity. With the Ebenezer rezoning, we saw a yield plan that was so grossly flawed that non-professionals uncovered multiple and egregious errors. With the reserve at Providence, the developer's incompetence in laying out the subdivision prompted him to request variances for 80% of his unbuilt lots. He has since abandoned the subdivision. With the senior living facility near Crooked Creek, the builder failed to implement several design stipulations made in agreement with the city. The construction firm in this case is associated with a city council member. We know that many developers routinely bend and break the rules in Milton, and through their agents on council, seek to change the rules to their benefit. Let me remind you that changing the plating process stemmed from developers exploiting a loophole in our development code. So I suppose I have a different view of what professional means. I would much rather cast the lot of our city with the planning commission than with so-called development professionals. I also found interesting the remark that we should not, and I quote, "put another hurdle in the way of development here in Milton. We have pretty good control over property developed here," unquote. This statement flies in the face of reality and is insulting to citizens. Citizens are outraged by unfettered development in Milton. The problem is not that we have too many.
Five minutes has elapsed.
...to development, but rather virtually no hurdles. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, we have one more public comment?
Yes, the next one is Tony Otita.
Good evening. My name is Tony Otita. I live at 325 Taylor Glenn Drive, and I came to speak on the same subject, actually, and I didn't realize that Tim would be so thorough and detailed about what he had to say, but I feel exactly the same way he did, and I wanted to add my support to everything he just said. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That'll conclude public comment. Sudi, if you can call the consent agenda, please.
Our item this evening under consent is approval of the financial statements for the period ending March 2017. Agenda item number 17-096.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item, which is, we had moved on the agenda.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals for District 2, Post 2. This is agenda item number 17-102.
All right. Well, every now and then we have some changes with regards to our appointees, and after five years, Christopher Glour had stepped down because of the hectic travel schedule, and I made a phone call to replace him real quick with a wonderful woman named Brenda Hampstead. And I've known Brenda for some time. She has served for cancer research with state and federal governments. She has served for the Milton City Charter Commission just recently, and she's given me her bio to read, so I want to read this, and with your approval, I'd love to appoint her for the District 2, Post 2 Board of Zoning Appeals position. So Brenda Hampstead and her husband Julian moved their family to the Milton area in 2004 from Peachtree Corners. Their five children have attended Simpson Elementary, Birmingham Falls Elementary, Hopeful Middle School, as well as Milton and Cambridge High Schools. After many years as a real estate agent and investor, along with encouragement from friends and family, Brenda started Hampstead Realty, a boutique residential real estate company representing sellers, buyers, and investors in the North Atlanta residential market. Brenda makes sure that her clients are welcomed into their new community or that the selling experience is smooth and successful from start to finish. In addition to her work in real estate, Brenda has a passion for volunteering in her local community. She currently serves on the City of Milton Charter Commission and has been representing the American Cancer Society as their lead volunteer legislative advocate on the state and congressional district levels for the last five and a half years. She and her husband also serve as leaders for addiction recovery and family support groups on a weekly basis for their church. In her free time, Brenda loves to travel with the family, cuddle her new grandbaby, and catch great movies, and run along the picturesque roads and trails of the beautiful city of Milton, Georgia. So with your permission, please make a motion to approve her to the BZA.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, okay, go ahead.
I'll move to approve Brenda Hampstead for Post 2, Seat 2 of Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Luss, second. Councilmember Thurman for approval for appointing Brenda Hampstead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. So if, Sudi, do we want to, do you have a, we'll swear, and if Brenda will come forward, we'll.
And I'll give everyone your cellphone, home phone number.
Okay.
Both Brenda and everybody else that's spent their time helping out with the city.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Sudi, if we can move on into our next item on reports and presentations.
Our first item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2017 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 17-097.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, we don't have any items with a public hearing, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. If the city clerk will please read the zoning rules and sound the first item, Chapter 50 subdivision, which I believe we've actually, we changed our agenda, but if you could read the first items.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances. In addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments, I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, an affidavit must accompany your public comment card. Before beginning your comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization if applicable. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of revisions to plat process, Chapter 50 subdivisions. Agenda item number 17-092. First presentation at the April 10th council meeting, and it was discussed at a work session on April 17th. Ms. Kathy Field. And for the record, I don't have any public comment cards for this.
Okay. Okay, I thought you said the Chapter 50.
Okay, I'm good, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As the city clerk mentioned, this issue was addressed at our last work session, and oh, that's not the one, sorry, we're still missing. But too many presentations here, I'm sorry. It may be at the very end of that.
It is.
So why don't I just use this on the overhead?
Okay, that's perfect.
So why don't we do the overhead instead, which is? You have to shut this off. Okay, at the last meeting, we did talk about redoing the plat process for those plats that are over three parcels in size. The review process for minor plats, which are those that are less than, that are three parcels or less, will remain the same. So with this, this is for the preliminary plat, the first part, first step in the process is the community development staff reviews application for completeness. Once complete, preliminary plat is forwarded to community development director. And then I, after reviewing it and make sure it's consistent with all of our regulations and ordinances, then forwards the plat to the planning commission for consideration. Planning commission holds a public hearing, and we do advertise that and send out notices using the same process that we use for our rezoning process. And they make recommendations regarding the preliminary plat. And then it then would come back to me, and as the community development director, I would approve or deny the preliminary plat, keeping in mind the considerations and recommendations of the planning commission. And the last part of this is the appeal. The way that we have currently structured this proposed ordinance in front of you is that if the preliminary plat is denied, the subdivider may submit an application of appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, I didn't want to bring this to your attention, that this is where the appeal would go. And I know Carter has some comments that he'd like to interject at this point, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carter.
Right, I just, I just wanted to bring up one issue on this, and while the, while the recommendation from the planning commission is the foundation of Kathy's decision on this, I think in the appeal of that, even though the normal appeal for the community development director would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, in this case, I believe that it may be better to come back to the mayor and city council for those appeals. In this plating process, while you will hear the final plat when it comes forward, the time for you to effect any change is going to be at the preliminary plat stage. And so if the planning commission were to recommend denial, or if the community development director were to recommend denial, then there is probably some fundamental issue with the plat that needs further review. And I believe that probably this board, rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals, is the appropriate place to hear that review. So as you look at this tonight, I would ask you that you consider the location of the appeal and whether or not you believe that it would be appropriate to come back to you so you can hear it at the preliminary plat stage, rather than have all that baggage come along with it and only get to hear it at the final plat stage.
Okay, is there any questions for Carter on that?
I think that makes sense, though, I mean, because really, when we get, it gets to us in a final plat stage, we really don't have a whole lot of say-so or choice in it. It's either up or down, or pretty much up, up unless there's something really unusual with it. So this would at least give us time to give some input in a preliminary plat, that so it could be adjusted before it came to us for a final plat.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Carter. Okay, any questions for Kathy? I think there was no public comment on this, so I'll close the hearing on this. If there's no other questions, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 17-092 with the change of the appeal coming before the mayor and city council versus the BZA.
I'll second that.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Sudi. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item, which was moved by motion and vote under the approval of the agenda, consideration to amend Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3, Planning Commission, Section 2, 206 duties. Agenda item number 17-093, first presentation, was at the April 10th city council meeting, and this was discussed at the April 17th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, based on your previous vote, there need to modify this section of the ordinance. Since we are not changing the responsibilities of the planning commission, they are maintaining their status to give recommendations. So this was to change that status to give them review or approval power, which has become moot at this point.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on that item, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so the hearing's closed. Do we need to, we still need to, Paul, make a decision on this, or not?
With it still on the agenda, you go ahead and have a motion if you'd like to deny.
Okay.
Maybe if the discussion is open now, would you like to make a comment? And the, for those who weren't in attendance last week during the work session, the point being made in these two agenda items was that the question of whether or not to give the planning commission the role of approval or denial of preliminary plats, and it was discussed quite healthily by this whole council. And the consensus was that we only give the planning commission the role of recommendations. And contrary to the previous speaker up here, that is exactly what happened last week during that work session. So just to set the record straight and make sure we adhere to the facts up here, I'd like to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? If not, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we deny agenda item number 17-093.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for denial from Councilmember Koontz, seconded by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous for denial, Sudi. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please sound the next zoning item.
Our next zoning item is consideration
Our next zoning item is consideration of ZM 17-01, 14505 Batesville Road, zoned AG1, with use permit by LRF Milton LLC, Little River Farms, to modify conditions 2A and 3B, U14-02, for relocation of parking lot and additional driveway to additional parking lot. Agenda item number 17-084, first presentation was at the April 10th regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you the first page of this petition. It outlines and read the parcel in question. The applicant is requesting, one, relocation of existing main parking as previously indicated on the site plan submitted August 19th, 2014; two, an additional small parking lot on the property; and three, an additional driveway to a point of ingress and egress to the property site. This is a site plan, that was the original site plan back in 2004, and here's a large view of the revised site plan. And Robin is going to help me, we're going to put it up on the overhead screen. So we've got to switch here. All right, I have it. Okay, all right, why don't we start at the top with the existing? Okay, so we're, right now, we're showing the existing pavilion that's outlined on the bottom right, and the top green area is the existing gravel parking. Now, that was incorrectly put in their site plan back in 2014, so this is a corrected plan showing the correct spot for the gravel parking. So we, as a staff, are in support of this modification to the site plan, and as I, and as I refer later on, that this is the part that we would like to support. Now, moving down on the site plan, you would, Robin?
Nice hands, Robin.
Can you move it, let's see, I, no, I, I think you're right. If you move it just a little up, so that you can show the entrance from Batesville Road for the driveway, okay, there you go. So we, the bottom half here is showing what the, what the proposal is for. It shows a new driveway coming in, outlined in orange, to an additional parking area, which is that dark blue, and then the shocking pink is the frame barn, which is where they would like to extend their rental facilities into for their special events. So, so these three elements really comprise the gist of their request. So with that, I'd like to go back to the PowerPoint. Great, okay, excellent. So I, I think I've explained that a little more in that slide. Pictures that show, this first one shows the view of barn from Taylor Road. The next is a view of the new entrance, that's that orange new driveway, to the access barn, boring, rather. And approximate location of new parking for barn from Batesville Road. Terms of history and background, the subject site is zoned AG1 and developed with a 10,500 square foot single-family residence and other accessory structures built between 1910 and the present on 47.7 acres. The mayor and city council approved a use permit for a rural event facility on September 22nd, 2014 pursuant to U14-02. There is also an existing 2,748 atrium or pavilion that has served as the primary location for events since the inception of the business. At the time of the approval of the event facility, the applicant, staff, and the surrounding neighborhoods proposed specific conditions regarding the days, times, and amount of noise permitted for the facility. In addition, the mayor and city council approved a use permit for a four-bedroom bed and breakfast on August 18th, 2014 pursuant to U14-01. The bed and breakfast is utilized to accommodate guests using the event facility. In the CZIM meeting, which was held on March 28th of this year, the applicant was present with their representative at the meeting. There were six neighbors who were also present. The majority of the neighbors live in Belmont subdivision located on the south side of Taylor Road. They were concerned about the proposed new parking and conversion of a barn that has been previously utilized as a horse barn to an additional event space and the use of an existing driveway from Batesville to be utilized for the converted barn. In addition, the neighbors voiced concern over the existing noise from the event facility, and if an additional event space is located even closer to the subdivision, its impact of noise and lights. The applicant responded to the use, responded that the use permit already contemplated all the buildings used as a rural event facility, and that was not an issue. The applicant stated that they were planning to close up the barn doors that face Taylor Road so that noise would not emit from that direction. In addition, they agreed to relocate the driveway in such a manner to, so that the headlights from cars would not directly impact the homes adjacent to Taylor Road. Since the time of the meeting, the applicant has proposed more stringent hours of operation for the barn to be Friday through Saturday, hours shall be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with music ending no later than 10:00 p.m. The proposed revised site plan to show the location of existing parking for the primary meeting area by the house and pavilion is supported by the staff, and that is, I mentioned, is that green parking area that I mentioned earlier, as it shows the exact location of parking versus the site plan submitted in 2014, which is inaccurate. The applicant is proposing a new parking area and associated hardscape/landscape improvements and utilization of an existing driveway on Batesville Road near the intersection of Batesville and Taylor Roads to serve the barn, which has been utilized in the past as a horse barn. Although the conditions of U14-02 include all the buildings, but the footprint of the structure shall not be expanded within the legal description of the site, the barn to be converted into an event space was not contemplated or discussed at the time of the planning commission meeting or city council meeting held in 2014. It is staff's opinion that based on the location of the barn, which is approximately 375 feet from the central line of Taylor Road, and 615 feet to the nearest home in Belmont, and the change of the use of the barn from a horse barn to an event venue, the proposed request to revise the site plan associated with conditions 2A and 3B to reflect the additional driveway and parking should be denied. Staff is in support of the request to revise the site plan associated with conditions 2A and 3B to reflect only the relocated parking lot that is utilized by the pavilion and main house within the northern portion of the site. Staff notes that the applicant requested a modification to 4A regarding the driveway. It has been determined that this modification is not needed. Recommendation, the staff's opinion is the proposed site plan modifications will negatively impact the adjoining properties that modify a structure that was not contemplated to be utilized as an event space. Therefore, the proposed request to revise the site plan associated with conditions 2A and 3B to reflect the additional driveway and additional parking should be denied. Staff does not support, does support the site plan modification to relocate the primary parking lot associated with the pavilion and house that contains the bed and breakfast. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of ZM 17-01 as reflected in the recommended conditions below. And they are in red, and essentially, they deal with the, that we recommend that the revised site plans submitted, what we see by the community development department on April 4th, 2017, to only modify the location of parking to the northwest portion of the site near the pavilion and house used as a bed and breakfast. Should council decide, however, to approve this petition, we would take out all the language and only leave in there so as to read to the revised site plan received by the community development department on April 4th, 2017 period, so that that would include all the changes. So, so those are the two ways that it can be looked at. We, obviously, as a staff, recommend the way it's shown here. And then the other last change is the location number of parking spaces shall be as depicted on the revised site plan received on April 4th, 2017, to only modify the location of parking to the northwest portion of the site near the pavilion and house used as a bed and breakfast. And so those are the recommended conditions, and happy to take any questions.
Have any questions? Kathy on this? Joe?
Kathy, when we discussed this originally in, at the, in the fall of 2014, September, October, whenever it was, did we specifically carve out use of the barn as a facility, or did we just not discuss it?
We did not discuss it.
Okay.
It was not included in the, in this, in the submission. It, we, we just talked about the pavilion, and then also converting a house into a B&amp;B, and those were the two items that were up for discussion.
But the language that we put in the use permit doesn't specifically exclude anything on the property, it just talks about the use of those specific buildings?
I believe so. Robin, can you, I mean, from a legal point of view, I believe that's what the applicant is, is saying.
So the, this, all the square footages of all the buildings within the use permit are included, so that's why they didn't have to come in for a new use permit, because the square footage was included. But all the discussions of exactly what would happen was only pertaining, as Kathy pointed out to, was to the pavilion. So it was never contemplated at that point in time that that barn would be used for entertainment or to be rented out. It was just part of the milieu, whatever you want to say, of the, the property.
But we included the square footage in the use permit.
We did.
So by including the square footage in the use permit, we're essentially saying that square footage was contemplated as u, for use.
I mean, staff was being very conservative in the sense that that was never discussed, because I believe that would have had a different impact if there were actually activities in that barn, other than having housing horses. So, I mean, that, that's why we've brought it up to you to make that decision.
Right, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're trying to be fair. I mean, obviously, we always try to be fair, but, but I'm a little bit concerned, because we talked about so many different things. There was a lot of stuff that we brought up as part of that discussion. My, you know, memory isn't, you know, ironclad when it comes to this, but I do remember talking about use of the grounds outside of the barns or outside of the residence. There was going to be, you know, quite a bit of activity that we thought about, so I'm, I'm worried that the fact that we didn't bring it up, and we didn't specifically ask the question, is sort of an error of omission on our side, it's not necessarily on the applicant's side. So I want to just make sure that we didn't have specific language that was detailed in the use permit that would have carved that out, or would have stated, this is why we didn't talk about it, because we specifically said that wasn't included. But if all of the square footage is included in the use permit, it's sort of one of those things, well, we must have contemplated it, otherwise, we wouldn't have, when we did our addition, we wouldn't have included those square feet.
Well, typically, for a use permit, we included all the square footage because those buildings existed, and all the, and that we did not want any building to be expanded in square footage, so, for instance, if they wanted to expand something, they would need to come back for a new use permit. So it is kind of a gray area, but I think that the staff's opinion was that there was never any discussion of any kind of activity occurring in the barn, and so we wanted to give a fair opportunity for everybody to give input, and that's why it's only a zoning modification and not coming back for
Okay.
a use permit.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I, I don't want to put you on the spot, Paul, but do you, can you weigh in on that at all with, whether if it wasn't specifically contemplated or talked about, but the square footage, the overall square footage was in the...
And I was trying to look at the, the package material to see if there was a specific description. To the extent it says the property and the structures they're on may be used pursuant to this use permit, because generally, any considerations that are unclear or vague are in favor of the free use of property, if it is not clear that there was a restriction on the uses in any particular building, then a lack of description would allow them to use those, all of the buildings. And I'm not seeing where it describes a particular use of, of the building, and it's not having been present, reviewed it beforehand, I'd be happy to, if staff has a point where the description of the square footages is contained, the one place I see is just a description of subject structures on the property, which wouldn't impact their uses. If it's just describing where they're located on the property and the size they may be, that wouldn't impact the uses. I'm looking at item 3A is the reference to square footages. If there's other references, be happy to weigh in. I don't know.
Yeah?
So Paul, is it safe to say that obviously, when the use permit was brought before us, and all the square footage was evaluated, the use of all of that square footage would be applicable at that decision at that time, and the applicant, of course, was using it in those areas in which he duly requested it, but he could have had other things, or other things happened in those other buildings on that square footage? Now, we're doing a zoning modification, which then would allow for the change of the structure of one of those, some of that square footage on that property, so the use still exists technically, but we're just now trying, I'm just trying to make sure we're clear, clear on what we're doing to Joe's question.
Well, and, and I certainly want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm answering. I'm looking at proposed modifications to conditions. I'm, I'm not looking at what the use permit actually says. To the extent it describes certain structures and what may or may not be used in them, the restriction must be explicitly stated, or clearly stated, not necessarily explicitly. We, you can infer from, logical inferrals. From what I see in the conditions, it merely depicts the structural size and location based on a site plan. It doesn't reflect a limitation on the uses. So if there are no, if the existing conditional use permit references a use of the property without restriction to certain structures, then all of the structures would be available.
Right, okay.
If there were other restrictions that were somehow, perhaps, a site plan depicted only used for, that could provide reference to a clearly depicted different use. I don't have that in front of me.
Makes sense. Rick?
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is, the use is not so much at, at risk here. What the, what they're coming forward to request would be adding a parking structure near that, that facility that today, under the current conditions, can be used under the use permit. But that's the, that's the thing that we are considering, is the addition of the parking next to that building.
As I understand it, I mean, Bill?
Right, so otherwise, today, theoretically, they could still use that, that facility, but the parking would be down on the far side of the property where it's located.
That is correct, that green area that I showed you earlier.
Okay, any other questions? And I know we've got a public hearing, I don't hear any more questions right now. Do we have public comment on this? We would allow the...
We do, sir.
First, we'll allow those speaking in support. Yeah, that would be that.
And that's Richard Kay.
Applicant, so.
Whose cellphone is that?
Putting in a thumb drop.
Always have to do that. Yeah. Go away on that side.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Rich Kay. I'm with the law firm of Sherman and Howard. I'm located at 1555 Peachtree Street Northeast, that's Atlanta, Georgia, 30309. I represent the applicant, LRF Milton LLC. I'm here with Joe Ivey. I'm here with Joe Ivy and Sam Ivy, who are trustees of the Ivy Trust, that is the actual owner of the property. We're here for a request for modification to the recommended conditions originally approved by this council in September 2014. At the council hearing on September 22nd, 2014, LRF promised to operate the Rural Events Facility in a professional and respectful manner. In accordance with the recommended conditions and ordinances of the City of Atlanta, LRF has kept its promise to the city and to this council. We are pleased to inform the council that in the two-plus years since the permit was approved, the City of Milton has never received a single noise or other complaint about the event facility from anyone. The applicant has hosted more than 150 events, and has kept its promise to the council and the community by maintaining noise levels well within the conditions of its special use permit. Applicant's professional oversight and exemplary operation, combined with routine verification of noise levels during events, has guaranteed its compliance with the conditions of its permit. LRF's use of the property as a rural events facility maintains the rural view shed. Taking into consideration the overwhelming approval of the green space bond, LRF, at its own expense, provides Milton with a rural view shed of over 47.7 acres, plus an additional, almost as large rural events farm, which is adjacent to the property and is a buffer between the events facility and Taylor Road. LRF has recently taken a loan to pay for renovations to the current 2.5-sided atrium. That atrium is open on one and a half sides, because in order for it to be fully enclosed, we had to sprinkle the site. And what we've done is we've taken a loan to go ahead and raise the money to actually enclose it fully, add full sprinkler to it, which is what the fire marshal requested. And that will also reduce any kind of sound coming out of that location. So, again, all the sound that we have coming out of there comes out of an open atrium. In the modification today, we are seeking to add a new, smaller parking lot near the white barn structure on the property. And let me figure out how to move this here. So, the parking lot is represented here in red. To the right of that is the barn. So, rather than have the guests come from one side of the property all the way over to the other side of the property, we wanted to locate the smaller parking lot, which will have 35 parking spaces. So, really, what we're contemplating is a much smaller venue. And the whole reason and motivation for doing this is that over the two and a half years that we've been operating, we've realized that in order to maintain a certain level of profitability, so that we don't have the pressure from the beneficiaries of the trust to sell the entire property, we have to make it a more viable financial enterprise. So, in order to do that, we've had to turn down, previous to this, many, many smaller events, like birthday parties, and smaller weddings, and whatever, corporate events, because they just did not want to rent that large 250-person-capacity atrium. So, we're looking, really, to use this barn, which was originally part of, again, our site plan. The barn was there at the site plan. What we've also done is we've moved the door of the barn, or plan on moving the door of the barn. So, the door currently would face the Valmont subdivision. So, we're going to seal that door and put the door open on the opposite side, away This shows the barn structure. First of all, we've got the parking in blue. And we see over here, we see the barn structure, and you can see where we've put the arrow, facility entrance, and outdoor gathering space. So, we've moved it from the foot of that 400-foot arrow to the opposite side. So, again, so it faces away from the Valmont subdivision. This parking lot will have approximately 35 spaces. And as Milton Code Section 64-1842 requires, 2.5 attendees per parking space. So, we really don't contemplate the barn. Again, whatever the marshal tells us, what the capacity is going to be of that barn, we don't really see it exceeding 80. But again, that's going to be up to the fire marshal. If we look at Code Section 64-1842B5, it provides that activity areas such as outdoor dining, entertainment areas, including parking, shall be at least 100 feet from any lot line. This picture that I have up here shows you that we fully comply with the Rural Events Facility statute. In fact, we have 100 feet for the parking, and from that parking to our property line, it's 540 feet. And then, from the barn area itself, there's 400 feet. We have fencing, if you just look to the north of that, of the barn, and around to the sides, we have fencing there, so really, none of the guests can get out. It's a liability issue for us. We don't want them going out into the pasture and stepping into a, you know, a hole or something like that. So, we're limiting that access. So, we're always going to have locations that fit squarely within the limitations. Lastly, if I can go through here and show... Where do I do here? Okay. You can see the round areas that I've circled in blue. 64-1842 provides that any location and dimension of undisturbed buffers, if needed, to ameliorate the visual and audio effects of the facility, will be evaluated and determined by the mayor and city council on a case-by-case basis for each side. We've deferred here for these to the city arborist, who will help us and instruct us as to what sort of buffers or vegetation that we need. So, I think we, again, what we're asking for squarely fits within the requirements of the code section. We are also seeking a driveway as well. The driveway would come in and go directly to the parking. When we had our community meeting, one of the concerns was the same concern that Taylor people, Taylor Glenn people had, that there would be headlights shining into their homes. So, what we've done is we've moved it away from a situation where it would possibly shine into the lights for the Valmont subdivision. Also, if you'll note that the parking facility is, if I can get this thing to move here, let's see, is below the, is 10 feet lower elevation where the parking is than the lot line. So, again, it's almost, it's in a recessed place. So, again, with the buffers and the recess, you're not going to be able to see the parking. Any questions from City Council, Mr. Mayor?
Bert?
On this slide you have up, why wouldn't you just do your driveway to that proposed parking from that, go back to where you were? No. Go back to the picture you were just on. So, that driveway that's there, just below the park, yeah, correct. Why wouldn't you just come in and do your driveway?
From here, from right here where I'm pointing?
From there, well, I would even come on around the bend, come on down the driveway.
Yeah. The reason is, here's where you can see it here. The reason is visibility. Visibility on Batesville Road. If we were to cut back to the existing one, right there, if we were going to cut there, you don't have that same visibility that you have on the top. So, that's what we're looking for, from a safety point of view. We, I mean, we would certainly, could certainly do that, but it's just not as safe. You don't have the same line of sight that you have when you go into the other entry.
So, is the other entry the main entry for the facility?
No. The main entry for the facility is further down the property, towards the main house. So, in order to have access to the parking, there is a current driveway that's there that ties into the small house that's there, and would take you down to the barn. That's the cut we're talking about, which, again, has very good visibility both directions on Batesville Road. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for applicant? Okay. Well, let others, do we have any others in support?
We have three more public comments in support and none in opposition.
Okay. So, we'll listen to the public comments, and then...
And we've got 20 seconds left on the 10 minutes. Do we want to go another?
Okay. Point of order, we, actually, would we count the applicant's presentation as part of our time for public speaking or not?
I typically say it's best to include it for, so that the opposition would have the same amount of time. I don't have your specifics.
Yeah. Doesn't sound, we don't have any public comments in opposition. Is the council okay to add a few minutes to the...
I'm fine with that.
Yes, certainly. Okay. We'll add, you know, five minutes.
Okay. Our next speaker...
Could you do that by motion, just to...
Yeah, I have a motion. We add five minutes to the public comment time.
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to add five minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, the pass, you announce, sweetie.
Our next speaker is George Bumiller.
Good evening. Lieutenant Colonel George Bumiller, live at 14708 Taylor Valley Way. And I have the good fortune of living directly to the north of Little River Farms for the past four years. So, two and a half years ago, you approved Little River Farms' event venue, and now we're here just to support that. It's pretty easy, and I'm just asking you for your support today. If we're sincere about preserving green space and keeping Milton rural, then we must support this reasonable request of using an existing historic barn as an event venue. Please, let's keep our city's iconic landmark farm around for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next comment comes from Lori Conan, who is representing Taylor Glenn. And I am in possession of an affidavit for her representation.
Good evening. Hope I don't repeat anything. I'm Lori Conan, 120 Taylor Valley Court, Taylor Glenn. As I understand, there have been no-noise complaints about the facility thus far, and this new barn facility would be even smaller, so assume less noise. I, for one, have stopped on the street, on Taylor Road, right in front of Valmont, during an event, in hopes to hear the band, but have heard nothing. Little River has jumped through hoops to accommodate Valmont by closing in the facility side that is facing Taylor Road and Valmont. The side that is facing Taylor Glenn, which is half-open, we hear absolutely nothing, even when I'm in my girlfriend's backyard, who butts directly to it. Secondly, the citizens of Milton had spoken on November, when 82% of them, of us, agreed to pay taxes to preserve the area for development with the green space bond. This event facility would do just that, stop this farm from becoming another subdivision, and the public would not have to pay anything. Granting this application to Little River Farm would show the citizens that City Council has heard them loud and clear, and has been willing to do their part in the preservation effort. Secondly, this farm cannot be lost to the whole city, to the unsubstantiated claims for just a few citizens. The City of Milton is blessed to have such an event facility in our neighborhood. It's mind-blowing to me that we're even having this discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Sweetie, if you'd please call the next speaker.
And our final speaker is Lisa Crandall.
Thank you. Lisa Crandall, 14700 Taylor Valley Way in Milton. My property is right next to George and facing the north side of Little River Farms. And I really am just here to support what Joe Ivy is trying to do with preserving Milton and keeping that property an entertainment place. Everybody from my neighborhood who stood here already spoke very well, and I just wanted to come up and give my full support, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, do we have, that's all public comments, or I'll close the hearing. I'll open back up. Does council have any questions, either from staff or the applicant? Bill?
Just one question.
Who's to...
Probably Kathy. Talking about lighting out here. Is there any provision for nightlights out here? And if so, what's proposed here? Or haven't we gotten that far down the room?
Robin, do we have...
In the CDIM meeting, they indicated they weren't going to do any more additional lighting, just, and they would have to go by the night sky ordinance if they did propose any kind of lighting.
Somebody else? Joe?
I have a question for the applicant, so. Given the fact that all the buildings, so first of all, you know, obviously, there was a admission, in terms of our original discussion, we didn't discuss the use of all the buildings on the property for these purposes. That doesn't necessarily mean it wasn't allowed. I think our use permit basically gave you guys the opportunity to use the entire property as an event facility. Have you had events in this barn up till now?
Not in the barn itself, but what we've done is, most of the weddings, and Joe, you can speak to that, I mean, most of the weddings, we have the wedding, the actual wedding itself oftentimes is outside, right? And it's in the orchard, and there's music playing for that, you know, violin. I remember for your wedding, you know, they had a small orchestra there playing, and we take advantage of different parts. I mean, it's the whole venue that, depending on how people want to use it, we can set up tents. We can't leave them there. I think, as one of the conditions, we can't leave them there for a certain amount of time. But we have had, we have put tents up on the facility. So, the barn itself, because of the fact that we don't have a certificate of occupancy, we would not be able to put people in that barn. And again, without having that, but...
Okay. All right. So, your lack of use of the barn as a facility up to this point is because you don't have a CO for the barn itself?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But we've used the surrounding areas.
Yeah. I mean, my interest was really based on if you've used the facility in the 150 different events that you've hosted, and you haven't gotten any complaints from a noise point of view, there's some backup to the idea that this isn't going to be a problem. I didn't even think about the fact that you didn't have a CO, so that makes sense.
Yeah. Let me address a couple of things. One is that we intend to have the barn fully enclosed. So, as opposed to the atrium currently, which we are going to enclose, but it has not been enclosed. This will be a fully enclosed facility. And we are taking, as I mentioned, we are going to close the door permanently. That will be a wall that faces the Valmont subdivision. So, the opening will be on the opposite side, facing the large house. And so, again, we have to get it sprinkled, and we have to bring in Fulton County water to get the CO for that.
Okay.
But again, we've also agreed that we would lower the time for music by one hour than the main event facility. And again, it's, for us, for the viability of this, so that we're not asking you to buy our property under the $25 million bond, we need to have more facilities, we need to have more events there. And the smaller events in the barn structure would give us that latitude, from a financial point of view, to be able to operate as a viable, as a viable entity.
So, that was a nice segue to my next question, because are there any other buildings other than the atrium in this barn that... other than the atrium in this barn that you're contemplating use of that hasn't, hasn't been used thus far? In other words, are you going to be back up here asking us again for some other changing conditions?
I don't think that, I don't, no. I mean, you have the sheds in the back, but those are chicken houses and things like that, so I, I would not see that happening again, no.
Okay.
If, if I can just interject, I just want to make sure it's clear that the application isn't to add a use, it's to re, relocate parking and driveways only, so we're not changing any of those uses by this.
Okay. Well, we are going to voluntarily impose on ourselves the one-hour restriction on the, on the, the operation of the barn.
Karen?
I believe if we want to preserve the farms like this and preserve the barns like that are on that property, we have to think outside the box, and we have to allow uses like this that are suitable for the area, or else it's, everything in Milton's going to be developed out in one-acre lot subdivisions, and that's not what any of us want, I don't believe. I live next door to our country club, they have weddings there about every Saturday night, I'm a whole lot closer than 600 feet, it doesn't bother me a bit. You know, it just, when you're inside your house, it, it doesn't bother you if, you know, so I don't have a problem with this. I think, I mean, I appreciate y'all being willing to try to do something different rather than just selling out to a developer and preserving the area, and from what I understand, I haven't been to an event there, but from what I understand, from people who have used it, they really enjoy the facility.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Rick?
The CO, you talked about adding sprinklers, doing whatever you need to do from a mandatory standpoint, and then also enclosing that one opening, making it into a wall. Are you looking at doing anything else as far as sound dampening of the existing structure, the barn?
Currently, no, we're not sure we need any. We're, it's going to be an insulated facility because we're going to have, it's going to be air-conditioned, so it's got to be insulated, and to the extent, again, we, we understand what's imposed on us by the code and also by the special use permit. We have, and we go out on a nightly basis with our decibel meter, and we make sure that it is restricted to the sound that we are, that, that's part of our special conditions. So if we would need dampening material, if we found that we would after we've tested it, we will do whatever we have to do to make sure that we fit within those special conditions.
Okay, but it sounds like you're actually looking at doing some addition on the inside by putting up walls with insulation or insulating?
Absolutely, we have to do that, you have to keep the air conditioning and, and yes, yeah.
Okay, and that was my other question, I guess directed at staff, then this, even this is, this is part of the general use permit, the sound restrictions would still apply, even though it's closer, the same restrictions that we have to protect Valmont and other places would apply for that same facility?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? No, Rick?
Can staff confirm that, that they haven't had any violations or complaints?
I can tell you that we haven't had any calls in '16 or '17 associated with anything that would be an annoyance, and we had a call for a cow on the road.
So, I thought he said he had fences to keep the guests in.
I don't know if it was his cow.
You have noticed the last time that we were taking one of the tests, that the crickets were actually louder than the noise coming from the barn.
So the first go-around, I, I voted against this, I think I might have been the only one, due to the, to the hours and the concern of, of sound. Sounds like y'all have done a good job of, of mitigating that. You've given an, an hour there, so I think I can support this as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else? No, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ZM 17-01, 14505 Batesville Road, zoned AG1 with the use permit by LRF Milton LLC, for the, with the conditions that the parking state that it is, we get rid of the word "only," so that, in the conditions of it, and that the time limit be as presented by the applicant.
Second.
Kathy, do you want to clarify something?
Yes, I would just want to clarify that the, that it would be tied to the site plan as received on April 4th, 2017.
That's fine.
Hey, you want to include that?
Yes, we'll include that.
We've got a, we're a second, and our, first include that, all right. So I have a motion as read for approval from Councilmember Thurman, with a second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? I, I do want to say, before we vote, you know, and I know it's, everything's got a little bit of controversy, although I would say I have not received any complaints, and I would say, you know, out of just this application coming forward, 99% have been, been in support. Also, driving by, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, the structure's on it, and again, as, as I think we all hear, the, the majority of folks, obviously, we'd like everything just to be left alone and no houses, no anything, but that's not practical. The biggest complaint is, you know, more traffic, more homes and, and density, so, you know, this, I think, was a very good, you know, a, a, a win-win for Milton. It's beautiful to drive by there. There may be a little bit of, you know, folks have a little bit of inconvenience on, on, you know, occasional time with just maybe traffic or a little bit of noise, but again, you guys have done a good job. Mr. Kay, thank you, the Ivey family, you know, thank you for, you know, I think it's a great gateway into Milton, it's on the border, it's also a great place, I've seen many events there where I'm proud that people from elsewhere can enjoy the beauty of Milton, and so thank you for that. And all in favor, please, Matt?
I'm going to agree, before we vote on this, with what Karen said earlier, that we do need to think outside the box when it comes to achieving our objectives, honor, conserve the green space, and, you know, that's, that's why these projects are good. But we also need to work with businesses to do these sorts of things, and have the spirit of cooperation amongst ourselves, and I would commend the Little River Farms applicant for being creative and thinking outside the box on this process. A quick story on, as an aside, I went shopping at our Publix up at Birmingham Road a while back, and, you know, that's one of the beautiful things about being a councilman, is we see our constituents when we go shopping. And there was a resident that walked by and looked at me and says, hey, you're one of our council members, right? And I said, yeah? And he said, you know, I want to talk to you about Little River Farms, and this has been after six months or so, and I said, okay, and he said, you know, when we had a problem, when we were concerned about it, you guys came along, and you were one of the first ones to talk to us, but I got to say you were right, and we haven't had one complaint since then. And at that point, I thought it was just a very amazing thing for a job well done on everybody working together to achieve a good objective. But it is thinking outside the box, working with people that achieves these objectives, and so I agree that we have challenges with AG1, that is, eating up our land. That's why I fought for the Ebenezer project like I did, but this is a great example of another way we can do that and work together, so I'm for it.
Bill?
I'll jump on, and Karen's in Matt's comments also. And back in November, obviously, we passed this $25 million bond referendum, and the purpose was to go out and purchase land. Well, what can be more ideal than having a, a landowner here in the city who's actually preserving 80 acres? Just think what that would cost us out of that bond referendum. This is what we've been promoting for the last 10 years, is getting folks like this to put their land in conservation or, or perpetually keep it in green space. And I think everybody's in favor of that. Got one email this afternoon from a resident about five miles away, and is concerned about 3,000 feet being repurposed for a parking area about five miles away. And if everybody's concerned about giving up 3,000 square feet, really better get on the boat here and get in support of a local resident who's going to preserve 80 acres out here.
Okay, Rick?
One last comment, I, I attended one event, a wedding at Little River Farms, and I was impressed with the way you, you ran the event, as well as making sure that the music was cut off on time, valet parking, everybody handled it well to make sure that people were safe in and out, so the event that I went to, the sound was under control, and you guys did a good job in, in actually managing, so we wish you luck.
Okay, got a motion and a second for approval as read and to the record. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passage unanimous. Thank you, thank you. Suti, if you will, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of ZM 17-02, VC 17-02, 980 Birmingham Road, zoned C1 and AG1 by the Continiyo Group to modify Condition 2A, 2004Z, 0043, to modify site plan for additional parking and move dumpster pad and concurrent variance to allow parking past the building. Section 641323A, Agenda Item Number 17085. First presentation was at the April 10th council meeting, Ms. Kathy Fields.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Staff would like to recommend that this item be deferred for a month because we found out that there is a deficiency in the advertising for this, and therefore that would need to be corrected before it can be heard. Now, it, it was advertised, so it would be appropriate if council so desires to hear public comment, but we would ask for a deferral, any vote on this until our next meeting.
Okay, all right, it's still, you know, on our agenda, so we, certainly, the council can make a decision, but we'll consider deferral as well as, you know, I, I believe we should take public comment.
You may take public comment, however, you will be required to take, conduct a legal public hearing at a future meeting. So, doesn't prevent you from doing anything here, but this would not count as your official public hearing.
Right, right, I just, and again, if the council agrees with me, I feel folks have, if it's advertised, then they, they'd come, let them speak, so. Any, Matt, you?
Oh, no, I was gonna, yeah, that was, I was there today to look at.
I'll, I'll open up for public comment now, then, Suti.
All right, the first speaker is Ron Crump.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Ron Crump, I'm with Continiyo Group, the applicant representative on this, and in short, I just wanted to talk about this real briefly. As you know, it's an existing shopping center, the Publix Center that was just spoken of earlier, quite a vibrant community area. In 2004, it was originally zoned to kind of be a commercial node, or a, I'm sorry, a, a neighborhood commercial node, and have that pedestrian interconnectivity. As it developed, we upheld our end of the bargain in our corner. Some of the other developments, it never really interconnected quite very well to be that node that it was sort of thought of. So with that, we've ended up kind of limiting ourselves and one of the primary access points, and that's created a hardship on some of the shops in that area. And with the new ownership and some of the changes, they're really trying to figure out a way to open this up and alleviate this hardship. In that, we're disturbing 3,000 square feet of green space. We did some creative rearranging to avoid some of the large trees, and take out just some of the smaller stuff, and we're replanting it with 11 new trees. This creates kind of a nice interconnectivity, opens the shopping center up, still adequate parking, creates a flow that's really going to entitle some of that activity back to the other side of the shopping center and really engage everything. That said, the signage, I apologize, it was advertised, we put the signs out there and it wasn't quite well enough instructed. The sign, the primary sign showed, was sort of placed exactly where the road punch-through was going to be, and really captured the audience that was coming from the Publix, but was not facing the public right-of-way. So we understand, and certainly understand, the deferral request on that, being that those signs were not technically on a public right-of-way. Our application, we do meet all the codes, despite the removal of the 3,000 square feet, we still adhere well within the 13,000 square feet required, so we feel that this should be an approved application. With that, I'll, I'll hold any time for comments at the end.
Sir, do you mind just repeating your, the address, your address for the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our address, the Continiyo Group is located at 3081 Holken Bridge Road in Norcross, Georgia.
Thank you. Suti, if you please call the next speaker. In support, and then?
We have no more in support, we have three in opposition. First one is Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1565 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. I'm in opposition to the proposed zoning modification. I live only one and a half miles from the crossroads. Last night, I actually walked the site, and I hope that each council member will do the same. I can cite six reasons for denial. First, the zoning modification reduces the green space area by 30%. While we are only talking about a small amount of land, this green space reduction is proposed for a highly visible and heavily trafficked area. Just a few months ago, 82% of Milton voters approved the Green Space Bond. Approving this modification would send the wrong message to your constituents about your commitment to green space. The current inventory of green space in Milton represents a baseline that should not be violated except under the most extenuating circumstances. The intent of the Green Space Bond was to add to this baseline inventory. Reducing green space through rezonings and then turning around and buying green space is tantamount to using green space money to subsidize other land uses. It is robbing Peter to pay Paul and a violation of the public trust. Second, I shop at the crossroads two to three times per week, and I can see that parking and traffic flow have never been issues around any of the businesses at the crossroads. This requested modification appears to be a solution in search of a problem. Third, approval would create multiple and serious safety issues, and I think this is the most important reason for denying this. This modification will further facilitate cut-through traffic, which is already a serious issue on the northeast corner. This zoning modification does not conform to Chapter 48 safety rule, that such driveways be at least 100 feet from the roadway. The road into the shopping center is also very narrow, making safe turns difficult. Lastly, the buildings on both sides of the road coming into the Publix creates blind spots, further exacerbating the safety issues. Fourth, I've heard that the current request conforms to the requirements for the crossroads overlay, and that is sufficient justification for this request. I disagree. If it was sufficient, a hearing would not be required. We should just allow a developer to make necessary changes, perhaps after a staff review. We require City Council review above and beyond staff's technical review, so that community values and other considerations can be applied. Fifth, please note that the Continiyo Group purchased this property as is. We should not be making exceptions to our code or compromising green space to goose their profits. And lastly, it is likely that collateral damage will be inflicted on the large hardwoods that are proximate to the proposed parking spots and driveway. The roots of these trees will assuredly be damaged by construction. Two trees have already been lost in the area and have not been replanted. In conclusion, please uphold the green space intentions of citizens as expressed by the overwhelming approval of the Green Space Bond and deny this zoning modification. Thank you.
Thank you. If you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Joe Whitley.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Joe Whitley, and I reside at 1250 Birmingham Road in Milton. I'm also an adjacent property owner, own property at the other side of the crossroads behind the Wells Fargo Bank, near the public shopping center. I have submitted- I have submitted a letter to the council and Mayor, and I commend your reading the letter about my position on the zoning. I stand in opposition to the change at the crossroads. I believe there's adequate driveway access to the parking lot and to the stores in that facility. The intersection, as I see it, to adopt the remarks of the previous presenter, creates a dangerous situation. The stop signs in the Publix parking lot are seen as optional by the people that go through there. In other words, there are stop signs, but people don't ever stop. It creates a very dangerous situation coming in and out of the parking area. As the police chief of the city would know, people driving down Birmingham Road are not driving at forty-five miles per hour, they're driving at fifty and sixty miles per hour and even higher. And when they turn and take that corner into the parking lot, they're coming in on two wheels, most of the time. So, I'm trying, when I'm trying to get out of the parking lot, after buying my groceries at Publix, coming out that one exit closest to the Birmingham Highway, Birmingham Road, is a dangerous condition. And if you added another intersection, another roadway on the other side, it would make it even more dangerous. So, I think that's, the public safety issue is the one that I would ask the council to look at closely. I would also say that, in terms of the bond issue, eighty-two percent, I heard, of the citizens of Milton that voted, voted in favor of the bond issue. There is a small amount of acreage at this location that's been preserved for the citizens of Milton to enjoy in perpetuity. Those of you on the council who lived here, who've been living here for many years, appreciate the fact that at that crossroads, there were many nice trees. Those trees are now gone, but in its place are this little pocket park, if you will, that we're talking about. So, the removal of the three thousand square feet for additional parking is really not necessary, as far as I'm concerned. And there is cross-through issue. As council knows, the crossroads is nearly impassable in the morning and afternoons to get through that crossroads, so to have more traffic funneling through the parking lot would be another safety issue. And looking at the issue, as I see it, the parking lot really never is more than half full. If there's a need for more parking spaces or access to the stores, there's really no need to have additional parking. And brief in my comments in my letter, I said, if anything broke, don't fix it. And I think that parking lot, that center, is perfect just the way it is, and I commend the council to vote against this particular rezoning request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sudi?
And our final comment is from Julie Zoner Bailey.
I don't know how close I need to be, can you, does that pick up? Good evening, my name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I reside at two fifty-five Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, three zero 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 four. I'm here this evening to request that you deny the zoning modification and concurrent variances for the Birmingham crossroads, specifically ZM seventeen dash zero two, VC seventeen dash zero two. This rezoning request, or zoning modification and concurrent variances, should be denied for the following reasons. It would reduce the existing green space within the development in order to add a driveway, more parking, and movement of the dumpster pad. It proposes to eliminate thirty percent, so not that three thousand square feet, but seven thousand sixty square feet of the existing dedicated green space, including seven hardwoods and additional evergreens that were part of the originally approved rezoning. There is ample existing parking in the development. More concrete and more parking is not needed. There's ample parking that is not currently utilized. Reducing green space is in direct conflict with the original rezoning, the original Birmingham Crossroads master plan, the rule Milton overlay, and as has been mentioned now several times in the prior item, as well as this evening's, it would also be in conflict with the eighty-two percent of individuals, including myself, that supported the green space bond. Worth noting is that the original rezoning required this amount of green space on this specific site, on this specific quadrant, because it was required by the Birmingham master plan, but additionally, it was required of the actual zoning itself for this quadrant because the developer took out so many of the very old, huge, beautiful specimen oaks and hardwoods. Reducing the legally required green space should be a non-starter. It shouldn't be allowed. A reduction of green space for more concrete and more parking is in direct conflict with the City of Milton's stated intent to increase green space in Milton, including the recent twenty-five million dollar bond referendum, specifically for purposes of increasing green space. This rezoning request, or zoning modification and concurrent variance, would also move the dumpster pad to a more visible location, negating the original intent of hiding the dumpster pad. This zoning modification also is in violation of Chapter forty-eight, which requires driveways, such as that being proposed, to be at least a hundred feet from a roadway. This would not be the, would not be the case if this were approved. As has been stated by the prior two speakers, this further complicates the transportation system of the development by introducing a roadway where currently there is green space. The additional drive and cut-through would bring more cars close to the current entrance off of Birmingham Road, with little distance between the entrance off of Birmingham Road and the current stop sign within the existing development. This also would increase the risk of more backed-up traffic on Birmingham Road, while also introducing a severe and significant public safety concern due to the proximity of the new roadway, where cars would be crossing within the development with regard to the current entrance and flow of traffic. This zoning modification is not warranted, there is no hardship. This is in direct conflict with the existing zoning legally in place, the Birmingham Crossroads master plan, the comprehensive land use plan, Chapter forty-eight, and the stated intent of the City of Milton to increase green space, not reduce it. It's hard to reconcile a request that reduces green space.
Ten minutes has elapsed.
I have about ten seconds. May I continue?
If you continue and wrap it up, thank you.
In a commercial area in the most rural area of Milton, when the City of Milton simultaneously is purporting to save green space with a green space bond and put a green space committee in place, please deny this zoning modification for all of the reasons enumerated. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sudi, do we have any more?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing. And is there any questions for the applicant or staff from council? Joe?
Kathy, how many parking spaces are in that center now?
We don't have the total parking.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll just put a lot.
I can provide that for you very easily.
You can get that.
It's okay. In the original, I guess, permit or design, there was called out a specific number of square feet that needed to be devoted to a village green or green space area. What was the requirement?
Was it seventeen, seventeen thousand? So, it's all listed in here? Yeah. I don't have it in front of me. It states it's thirteen thousand square feet. Well, it says the Birmingham Crossroads overlay within the northeast quadrant to be a minimum of thirteen thousand. With the proposed changes, the site plan provides for sixteen thousand five hundred and seven square feet. Therefore, the site remains in compliance, so it meets, they suggested or required thirteen thousand, and even with the reduction that they're proposing, it's at sixteen thousand five oh seven, which is above the thirteen thousand.
Okay, so, so for whatever reason, they just put more space in than they needed?
Correct.
They're clawing back some of this space, but we're not in violation of what the original intent?
Correct.
Okay. I've got a question for the applicant as well.
Yes, sir.
What type of, okay, so, so I'm gonna break this into a couple of different pieces. You're asking to add a driveway, you're asking to take away some parking spaces, add some new parking spaces with a net plus of five parking spaces. You're gonna move a dumpster pad, and you're rearranging your green space.
Yes, sir.
What was the quantitative analysis that was done in order to come up with, you needed a net new five parking spaces? Because if you've got a hundred and twenty parking spaces in that area?
Primary.
Five seems like a very small, trivial amount.
It really does, and I fully understand that, and the concerns of all the citizens. The primary issue is the tenants located in that particular quadrant. There's a lot of parking in the Publix field, but we don't see the shoppers parking at Publix and then walking over. Unfortunately, we in America are not a huge walking friendly group, and if I can drive my car over there, I will, and if it's too hard to get to, I'll go another day or never come back. And so, we're seeing a decline in the tenancy interest in that particular corner, and before it becomes a decline of the overall center, we immediately figure out how to address it. I would love to stand here and say we can figure out a way to add twenty or fifty parking spaces, and one of the things we may come to light and we're going to take back is, what exactly is promised to Publix as far as parking? Is there an opportunity for a net zero green space? We're gonna look at that for sure. I hear it loud and clear, I understand the City of Milton, you know, you guys just did this initiative, and we don't want to necessarily be the straw that immediately breaks that back. However, we feel that the hardship on our end is very great to give these tenants what they're demanding, otherwise, we're gonna see spaces slowly decline.
And I may want to add too, you know, certainly, and I appreciate the fact you understand the community and are hearing the concerns, but, you know, obviously, we want, as much as you do, we want you to be successful for our citizens and be something they're proud of. I might suggest too, to your last statement, if this is being deferred and coming, if it comes back, that you may look at that to, I understand, to maybe shift some things so that certain spaces can be used, tenants, you know, it works better for them, make them viable, but maybe look overall, if you can make it to where the, you know, it's a net add of parking and the green space stays the same, maybe just moved and replanted or an area, so that's just a suggestion, but anybody else? Matt?
Yeah, I would confirm with that. I actually just saw Tyler, the lead dentist, at Dennis Street, Milton today, and of course, Ken and Cam over at the UPS store, and that area has been one in which the tenants that are there do a great job servicing the citizens of Milton in that area, and we want to see them be successful. But you've got three buildings right there that are not being used, and I saw that today as well, and, you know, those are empty storefront properties where it is too, and we as a council, at some point, will have to make a decision. Well, yeah, we understand, you know, green space is part of the part of all of Milton, but the complete package that we're doing is live, work, and play in Milton, and so, I would agree with what the mayor said, I think we've got some areas that could be used to move green space, if we could, maybe in that Publix parking lot, kind of by the dumpsters down low on the east side, if you will, because those aren't usually used, that's a great, I see people running and jogging in those parking spaces. So, that might be an idea there, but finding a way to achieve an objective, to allow our businesses to be successful and serve our constituents, I would be agreeable in that, but I understand the need for deferral, and I think that's something that we should do, so.
Okay, anybody else? Bill?
Yeah, I visited the site also, and I understand the issue that you're trying to resolve there with place and parking spaces behind the buildings, and I know on the opposites, on the west side of the dumpster pad there, you have two handicap spaces that almost are adjacent to that dumpster pad, so I understand the lack of accessibility to accessible parking spaces, so there's more than just these five parking spaces under consideration in your evaluation too, I would imagine.
Absolutely. Having that cross-connection would open up a feel of some inter-parking a little better as well, for sure.
Yeah, I don't know how you get a van, a handicap van into that parking space up there by the dumpster pad, but this is something you're gonna have to work out, obviously. But the other point is, and I think Mayor and Matt brought it up too, was maybe looking at the possibility of exchanging or compensating for that lost or mis, uh, uh...
Sure.
Mispurposed green space up there for a parking spot. Possibly, there's some...
We hear that loud and clear, and we'll definitely take that back and figure out what we can do. And the other thing, I think there was a lot of discussion about, is the traffic and that drive being a little close. The existing drive is there, so of course, we're trying to mirror up to a degree that while missing that major tree, they do have some great root pruning systems that would allow us to save that tree, or at least according to the arborist, create a functional root barrier that does allow that tree to survive on no arborist.
They want to look at permeable paving up through there too, just to help mitigate the impact on the tree roots.
Possibility, for sure.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. I'll open up, we've got a recommendation from staff to defer this. Obviously, the council can take any action they want, so I'll open up for motions.
Make a motion to defer item number seventeen dash zero eight five.
Second motion.
Thirty days, what's the defer?
I believe it is thirty days, to the next schedule.
To the next zoning meeting.
And I would add, one that can be appropriately advertised.
May first, May fifteenth?
It'll be the fifteenth, wouldn't it?
May fifteenth, okay.
Okay, is that good with the motion? I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for a deferral till May fifteenth, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone in opposition? No, that passes unanimously, Sudi. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ seventeen dash zero two, one two eight zero zero, one two eight three zero, and one two eight five zero, Hopewell Road by Fuqua and Associates, to rezone from AG one agricultural to R four A single-family dwelling, to develop seventeen single-family lots on fourteen point six acres at a density of one point one six units per acre. Agenda item number seventeen zero eight six. First presentation was at the April tenth regular city council meeting, Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The parcel in question is outlined in red, there are three parcels that total this application. Current zoning for this parcel is AG one. The twenty thirty-five future land use map shows the land used for this area as agricultural, equestrian, estate residential, A E E. Site plan that was submitted on January thirty-first, and then a new site plan was submitted on March third with revised rear setbacks, and then lastly, on March twenty-second, this final revised site plan, which shows a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, as opposed to a connecting road to the subdivision next door. It's, it's on, it's just a sole road with the cul-de-sac. The subject site contains fourteen point five six five acres and two single-family dwellings. It is located on the west side of Hopewell Road with Bond Drive to the east. The site is located within the agricultural equestrian estate residential designation of the City of Milton twenty thirty-five comprehensive land use plan that was recently adopted on October seventeenth of two thousand and sixteen. Staff also notes that this property is within the rural Milton overlay. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to R four A residential with a minimum fifteen thousand square foot lot to develop seventeen single-family residences on an overall density of one point one six units per acre. Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on March third, staff offers the following considerations. In terms of development standards, the applicant meets the development standards for the R four A. Landscape strips and buffers. The proposed development shall comply with Article Three Tree Reservation and Administrative Guidelines within the zoning ordinance, unless, which states that unless otherwise specified, lots developed with the single-family detached dwelling units are not required to provide landscape areas or zoning buffers. Other site plan considerations... Other site plan considerations. The revised site plan contemplates a cul-de-sac, and therefore, there is no interparcial access with Vicarry Crest to the north. Staff notes that this connection is not required by either the fire marshal or the transportation engineer. In addition, the site plan does not indicate sidewalks along Hopewell Road and the interior of the subdivision. At the time of the land disturbance permit, the developer shall be in conformance with Section forty-eight dash five-six-two street sidewalks and other public places. Staff will condition the two one-acre lots adjacent to Hopewell Road with the rural view shed requirements since the R4A zoning districts are not required to provide this rural view shed. Environmental site analysis. The environmental site analysis report is sufficient and satisfies the requirement of Section sixty-four dash twenty-one-twenty-six. Arborist comments. Per this plan, seven significant specimen trees are to be impacted or removed. Replacement for said trees will be two-hundred-and-nineteen four-inch caliber trees. There are additional specimen trees along Hopewell that shall remain undisturbed. Nice young hardwood growth at the northern portion of the site. Much of the site will be cleared, however, with the exception of state waters buffer area to the south. City of Milton Fire Marshal. The subdivision is allowed to have only one entrance based on the small number of houses, though the one to the north only had, has one entrance, and this ordinance did not change until after that subdivision was plotted and built. The preference would be that the connection be made, the interparcial access, that is. However, from a code perspective, it is not required. Transportation. At present, the project proposes seventeen lots with no connection with Vicarry Crest. A new entrance is proposed approximately two-hundred-and-seventy feet south of Glen Haven Drive on the east side of Hopewell Road and nine-hundred-and-seventy feet south of Hopewell Place Drive, which is the existing entrance to Vicarry Crest per the site plan. These meet the driveway spacing criteria. The average daily traffic volumes for 2014 on Hopewell Road is ninety-one seventy vehicles per day. Intersection site distance looking both east and west at the new proposed entrance is over five hundred feet. And turn lanes warrant for the new entrance to be determined based on number of lots estimated to use new entrance. Fulton County School Bill Impact Statement. It is estimated that up to eighteen new students would be generated from this development. Fiscal impact of the seventeen single-family homes. The present value of annual net fiscal impact over twenty years is to the negative of sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars. The CZIM meeting held on February twenty-eighth, the applicant's representative was present. There were approximately fifteen people in attendance. They voiced their objection to the proposed development with the following comments. It is against the 2035 Future Land Use Plan for Minimum One-Acre Lots that was just approved in October of 2016. It will cause additional traffic within Vicarry Crest and the area in general. The residents are tired of additional homes being built that are not consistent with the approved future land use plan for AEE one-acre lots. They want to be assured that the new homes will be as large as the existing homes in Vicarry Crest and not connect with Vicarry Crest. Residents of Brookshade, which is to the north of Vicarry Crest, are concerned that if this property is rezoned to R4A, then the property south of Brookshade will also be rezoned to higher density. Public Participation Report. The applicant conducted the public participation meeting on March ninth, 2017. The applicant also met with the Vicarry Crest HOA on February twenty-fourth, 2017. There were three people in attendance. The following issue and concerns were expressed. The density of the development, how close are the rear property lines? Could the houses be built? Separation distance between homes? Square footage of houses? Price of new houses? And street connection with Vicarry Crest? The applicant responded to the issues and concerns with the following. The density of the surrounding properties and subdivisions match or exceed the density of the proposed development. Revised site plan to increase setbacks and separation. Clarified building square footage. City of Milton Design Review Board Courtesy Review was held on March seventh, and their comments were, can the entrance line up with the Glen Haven entrance? Question if the lots that include the stream buffer are large enough to accommodate a swimming pool without any variances? And also, can the large specimen trees be saved? In terms of the standards of review, the first standard is whether or not the proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The proposed seventeen lot subdivision consists of lots between sixteen thousand ten and twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet in size. There are one-acre lots that abut Hopewell Road. To the north is Vicarry Crest subdivision, which has developed lots between fifteen and twenty thousand square feet in size adjacent to the subject site. To the east is Glen Haven subdivision, Zone T three, transx zone, developed with large common areas along Hopewell Road and minimum five thousand square foot lots within the development. Also, to the southeast within the City of Alpharetta is Cotton Woods Estates, gracious living retirement facility, Zone C two. Further to the southeast is Orchards at Hopewell, also within the City of Alpharetta, Zone R eight. To the south of the subject site is undeveloped R fifteen zone land within the City of Alpharetta. To the west is Andover North subdivision within the City of Alpharetta, Zone R fifteen, and the proposed development is consistent with adjacent and nearby developments in the area. And here is a map that shows all those various subdivisions as they relate to the parcel in question. The second standard of review, whether or not the proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. It is staff's opinion that the proposed development may adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property based on the fact that the 2035 Future Land Use Plan map recommends that the subject site be developed AEE, which requires one unit per acre and one-acre lots. Three, whether the property to be affected by the proposal has a reasonable economic use is currently zoned. The subject site may have a reasonable use currently zoned AG1. Four, whether the proposal will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. It is staff's opinion that the proposal may cause a burden on existing streets and schools if approved. Five, whether the proposal is in conformity with the policy intended of the land use plan. The City of Milton 2035 Comprehensive Land Use Plan map shows agriculture, equestrian, and state residential, and the proposed use is inconsistent with that. It's inconsistent with the following plan policy. We will encourage development that is sensitive to the overall setting of the community and will contribute to the community's character and sense of place. Proposed use density. Single-family residential at one point one-six units per acre is inconsistent with the recommended density of one unit per acre for agriculture, equestrian, and state residential. Six, whether there are other existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property which give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposal. The proposed development is inconsistent with the plan map recommendations of agriculture, equestrian, and state residential, which requires minimum one-acre lots. The plan map was recently approved by the mayor and city council in October 2016. Previous zonings and development adjacent to the surrounding and surrounding the subject site were approved prior to the most recent Comprehensive Land Use Plan map adoption. Based on these facts, it is grounds to recommend denial of RZ sixteen dash oh-three. Seven, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use which can be considered environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of the City of Milton. Based on the number and size of specimen trees to be removed, it is staff's opinion that the proposed use may be environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of the city. Conclusion. The proposed seventeen lot, single-family subdivision is inconsistent with the City of Milton's 2035 Comprehensive Land Use Plan map for agriculture, equestrian, and state residential. Therefore, staff recommends denial of RZ seventeen dash oh-two to rezone from AG1 to R4A. A set of recommended conditions are included if the mayor and city council chooses to approve this petition. Recommended conditions. If this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, the rezoning of property located in Hopewell Road, it should be approved for R4A Single Family Residential. Conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. Two, single-family detached dwellings and accessory uses and structures. To no more than seventeen total dwelling units at a maximum density of one point one-six units per acre, whichever is less. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following. To the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on March third, 2017. B, all areas which are not part of individual lot and held in common should be maintained by a mandatory homeowners association. Three, to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations, and these development standards are consistent with the requirements of the R4A. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication, and improvements. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of the City of Milton Department of Public Works. Five, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A stormwater management concept plan shall be submitted and approved by Milton Public Works Department. And that is my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we have any question? Rick?
Kathy, is the difference between R4A and AG1, just one, is it one lot difference? Are we looking at, this is for seventeen, would sixteen bring it into compliance?
Um, I believe it was fourteen, wasn't it something like fourteen? We think it's-
And a good portion of the property is a pond, so I don't think you could get fourteen.
Yeah, so, and of course, then with AG1 comes all the setback requirements as well, you know, so that would also kick in, as I say.
Okay, anybody else? Any other questions for Kathy? So, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do, sir.
All right. Allow the, I guess the applicant first to speak.
Is it a PowerPoint or is it? Mayor members of council, I'm Scott Reese, from Reese and Associates doing business at one-three-six-eight-five Highway nine, Milton, Georgia, three triple zero four. I'm here tonight representing Fuqua and Associates and Steve and Peggy Fail in their application to rezon their property located at one-two-eight-zero, one-two-eight-zero-zero, one-two-eight-three-zero, and one-two-eight-five-zero Hopewell Road from Ag1 to R4A to develop a residential subdivision on seventeen lots, of seventeen lots of fourteen and a half acres at a density of one point one-five units per acre. As you'll see by the slides, this is a kind of a unique piece of property. It's bordered on two sides by the City of Alpharetta. There are nine developed subdivisions to the north in the City of Milton that are all developed in a similar manner with sewered lots, with lots less than one acre. Go ahead. You'll see the city zoning map here. It shows again the developed subdivisions and our undeveloped parcel. City of Alpharetta zoning map that shows the R fifteen, which is fifteen thousand square foot lots in proximity to our south and east, and you'll also see the C two zone property to, across the road to the, to the east. You'll, as I stated before, there are nine adjacent or surrounding developments in our immediate area that were developed in a manner similar to us, sewered lots, less than one acre. Number one, Vicarry Crest subdivision. Two, Providence Oak subdivision. Three, Brookshade subdivision. Four, Glen Haven subdivision. Five, Southfield subdivision. Six, Milton Place, Hopewell Place, Hopewell Close, and Crescent Ridge with a subdivision that has been permitted but not built at the present time. We had a discussion of the City of Milton recently passed Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We did, the staff discussed the map, but not the plan itself. As you'll see, we have the verbiage of the map. There are areas along the southern border of the city that have been identified with higher-density mixed-use development, particularly in the Deerford and Crab Apple character areas. Higher-density residential development opportunities exist in the Milton Lakes character area and Bethany. Outside of these areas, the majority of the city is reserved for low-density residential development on lots one acre or greater. In your objectives, it says we support appropriate residential and non-residential infill development and redevelopment in ways that complement surrounding areas. In the objectives on housings, we will accommodate our diverse population by encouraging a compatible mixture of housing types, densities, and costs within the city. You'll see the area, and I guess pale blue is the character area Milton Lakes. We are in the Milton Lakes character area. Okay. All right. Development patterns and guidelines for the Milton Lakes character area. The predominant land use for the Milton Lakes character area should be, should remain residential. New residential development should be, should fairly match the mix of housing types and styles of established neighborhoods in this character area. The Milton Lakes character area contains diversity of residential lot sizes, and future residential development should reflect an average of the current density, densities and housing patterns. The City of Milton Future Land Use Map 2030, which was the prior map, designated our area as residential. Okay, go to the next one. Twenty thirty-five, it went from residential to ag. Okay, go to your next one. Once again, you'll see this 2030. It also reflects the area for the subdivision that's been permitted but not built, shows this ag designation, which is an error. The sewored map, I think we're all familiar with that. Mandatory sewer connection, this basically is stating, reiterating the State Health Department guidelines and the Fulton County Health Department guidelines that say connections must be made to sewer if sewer is within two hundred feet of the adjacent property. We have sewer through our property, so it's a mandatory sewer connection based upon the Health Department regs for clean air. Our site plan is submitted, you'll show the, we show the one-acre lots along the street, the rural view shed in place. Just for clarity, we did not show sidewalks. Sidewalks are proposed along Hopewell Road and throughout the subdivision. We revised the site plan on our community information meetings to increase our rear building setbacks to match the Vicarry Crest subdivision. We also increased our separation between houses to be larger than the Vicarry Crest subdivision. Also, after our CZIM, it was the city staff reiterated our change that we could propose a cul-de-sac street, so that's that last thing. Okay. Just highlighted there the changes. It is the applicant's opinion that the requested rezoning and site plan is the most logical, consistent, and best use of their property, is that this is not a speculative venture by a developer. This is the owners of the property that wish to use it to its full potential, as would any other City of Milton property owner. The applicants have owned the property prior to the creation of the City of Milton and have watched the surrounding areas transition from semi-rural to medium and high-density residential, along with a commercial designation across the street. To deny this rezoning is in effect creating a reverse spot zoning. The rezoning currently follows the text of the recently adopted comp plan with its guidelines and the executive summary along with the development and housing objectives. The rezoning and site plan were specifically designed via the development guidelines in the Milton Lakes character area in matching density, lot sizing, housing styles. This language is what was presented to the ARC for approval of the comp plan for compliance of diversity in housing. If you completely ignore the comp plan and only use- If you completely ignore the comp plan and only use the comp map, you ignore the history of other rezonings in this area, these rezonings were also not compliant with the comp map. You will also ignore errors that are on the map. This is a singularly unique parcel that joins the City of Alpharetta on two sides, has 5,000 square foot lots and commercial zoning across the street. There is sewer through the property and nine neighborhoods of similar lot sizes surrounding the property. The property was formally designated as residential use on the previous comp plan and changed on the new comp plan to ag use. The applicant feels that staff's denial of this is logical and consistent, proposed used was completely consistent with the Milton Lakes character area development and guidelines defies standard property use and planning. To require this property to be, to be developed with lots times or more the size of lots in the surrounding area defies logic. What is the reasoning in the denial? Is it to limit the diversity of housing and as such the city's population? The applicants understand that they have constitutional property rights and then property and property rights taken through regulation are treated the same as physical seizure in the legal interpretation. The applicants intend to fully exercise their constitutional property rights. This rezoning is completely consistent with the comp plans designed for Milton Lakes character area. I have a letter from the, one of the applicants, the older couple, the Fails. If there's time, I would like to read in into the public record. Dear Mayor and Councilmember, please accept this letter as a formal request for reconsideration of the zoning of my property located at 12850 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia. My family has owned this property for over 60 years, and the home presently on the property was built for my family 57 years ago. My daughter currently resides there. We have watched the area change from farms that I grew up on to the current modern subdivisions. We have never voiced opposition to the development around our property as we felt that in time we would sell the property for similar development to the properties surrounding ours. The property is an integral part of our retirement nest egg as I retired last year. My ability to retire was based on selling the property to own an offer from Mr. Fuqua that would aid my family financially. We do not feel that we are asking for anything different than what has been allowed for other property uses and the plans that have been submitted for the development of our and the adjoining property are similar, if not better than the surrounding previously developed property. Under the current zoning, the shape of our property will make any development difficult and will destroy the value. The current residence facing Hopewell Road is a 57-year-old ranch-style home and is not consistent with the development around it. And your subdivision greeting people entering Milton on Hopewell Road would enhance the neighborhood, and we feel will increase the values around it. Again, thank you for consider, your consideration accepting the plans submitted by Brumlo Reese and in allowing this property to contribute to beautification of the City of Milton. A current and future property Milton owner, we look forward to your reconsideration and acceptance. Peggy Fail. We have formally requested of staff and of you for a deferral on this rezoning. We have two applicants. The applicants are still in a little bit of negotiation. We would like the chance to perhaps revise the site plan and make it more palatable to staff and the surrounding neighborhoods. So I would request that we have a one-month deferral to see if we can land upon a, a site plan and a use that is more palatable to, to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. City, do we have more public comment in support?
Not in support, we do in opposition.
Okay. Continue with public comment, and then if there's any questions for the applicant or staff, we can do that afterwards.
The first speaker is Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 15625 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the proposed rezoning. I attended the CZIM and the Planning Commission meeting conducted for this rezoning. I also attended the CPAC meetings where land use redesignations were discussed. There are a number of reasons to reject this rezoning. First, the builder did not attend the CZIM, but rather sent a surveyor as his representative. I am perplexed that a developer proposing an eight-figure project would not take the opportunity to meet with concerned citizens and answer their questions. I think councils should not even consider a rezoning where the CZIM is not attended by the developer himself. Second, staff has recommended against approval. I've read their report, it is thorough and well reasoned. Third, the Planning Commission has unanimously voted against this rezoning. Their discussion on this matter was rich and informed. The Planning Commission rendered a professional and well reasoned recommendation against approval. Fourth, this rezoning violates the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which was just approved. I actually attended and participated in several CPAC meetings. I distinctly recall the conversations that were had about land use designations. A deliberate decision was made not to change the designations for any properties. The builder's representative will tell you the Comprehensive Land Use Plan supports rezoning. However, he did not attend the CPAC meetings. I did, and I can tell you the land use map was deemed the guiding document. Fifth, this rezoning increases density and extends sewer. Citizens are overwhelmingly against any and all schemes to increase density or extend sewer. Citizens are fed up with traffic, congestion, overcrowded schools, and other problems resulting from density giveaways in Milton. And I would point out that each of you has, at one time or another, has pledged not to extend sewer. Sixth, the builder will pre, will cite previous rezonings and surrounding density as justification for rezoning. However, I remind you that the city attorney has stated repeatedly that previous rezonings do not set precedent. Each rezoning stands on its own. Although I do not entirely agree with this position, that seems to be the city's position. Furthermore, much of the surrounding density was approved during the Fulton County regime, and we should not feel bound by it. Lastly, the builder will state that homes on one acre lots will not sell, as they will not be comparable to nearby homes. This is patently false. We all know that Milton's housing market is super hot, and almost anything will sell. And, and a nearby real estate agent has convincingly argued that the current plan would actually depress property values, and she has specific empirical evidence to support her contention. Please uphold the original vision of Milton and the future promise of Milton and deny this rezoning. Do not defer. Thank you.
City, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Jennifer Pino.
Thank you for having me today. I would like to, I'm Jennifer Pino, and I live at 175 Oakhurst Leaf Drive in Milton, Georgia. I am a Realtor. I believe that Tim was referring to empirical evidence that I have regarding a situation that happened. I am also a property owner in Brookshade, as well as a Realtor, and my lot borders the Vickery Crest subdivision, as well as some undeveloped land, which borders the north end of Vickery Crest and Brookshade. So this project is very important to me because I believe that whatever happens on this land bordering Vickery Crest on the south side will be used as a precedent for rezoning the land on the north end, which borders my property and my neighborhood. In 2016, when a builder applied for rezoning for the land on the north side of Vickery Crest, my neighborhood values were damaged during that time. My client, who was on Brookshade Parkway, which backed the land in the 2016 zoning re, application, sorry, rezoning application, they, their property was under contract at the time of that application. When the buyer found out about the application to rezone for higher density that would be touching their backyard, similar to this builder's application, the buyers terminated the contract. We were able to sell the property a few months later at a net loss to the seller of approximately $20,000. This was as a result of the application for higher density being made, not the approval. Unfortunately, this sale was then used as a comparable sale for other sales in the neighborhood all throughout last year. Sales slowed down, and that was used on appraisals for the sales that did happen, and we don't even know the overall net effect that that had for, and we could still be feeling the net effect from that negative impact. So in this case, I've heard that the builder or the representative, I've heard him mention that they have to rezon this property to higher density because they can't sell the homes at a high enough price on the AG1 lot size to make a profit, but I do disagree with that. I pulled data today from the First Multiple Listing Service, and as of today, from the last 365 days, for properties over $850,000 in Milton. During this last year, 78 homes have sold from between $879,000 to 249, sorry, $2.49 million, and 41 of those homes sold for over $1 million. There are also seven homes currently under contract between $869,000 and $1.795 million in Milton. The data shows that the builder could in fact develop and build on this land in accordance with the current and existing AG1 zoning. They could expel, expect to sell those homes for a profit. The builder would prefer, of course, to maximize their profits at the citizens' expense, which is why they want to rezon the property to less than one acre lots. I would ask that the city council respect the recommendation of their staff, the Planning Commission, the recently approved CLUP, and the citizens of Milton, and flat out deny the request to rezon this land. Denying the applicant's request for the deferral avoids kicking the can down the road, which creates the impression among citizens that the council doesn't take seriously their previous words. For all of you have stated at one time or another that you would do your best to not extend sewer into unsewered areas of Milton. This would be a clear message that you stand with the Planning Commission, your staff, the CLUP, and the citizens of Milton if you would please deny this application today. Thank you.
Thank you. City, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mike Perizzi.
Hi, Mike Perizzi, 12892 Donegal Lane, Milton, Georgia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I just want to echo a couple of things I heard earlier. You know, I oppose the rezoning. I also ask that you all reject it, you know, in particular for the reason that by deferring a rezoning case like this, we're creating an incentive for developers to come to this council, spend a lot of our citizens' time, who provide input throughout the process, right, and put forth something that they may know they have a very slim chance of getting approved. So it's always, you know, creating the incentive to push the envelope as far as you possibly can. And that comes at the expense of all of us who have to spend time on it, all of you who have to sit here and hear multiple hearings. So for that reason, I'd, I'd encourage you to follow the staff's recommendation, denies, deny the rezoning. A couple additional concerns that I have, I participated in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan process, and I agree with the assessment that the map was the defining factor there. There are specific concerns around density, spacing between homes, the impact on the traffic. The other thing I noticed in just reading the application in the back of the room today was the school projection impact, which it states two to four elementary school students. I live in Vickery Crest, so I'm familiar with what a new home, new construction neighborhood looks like, and I can assure you that my projection for the upper limit range of a 17-home neighborhood would be more than eight elementary school students. In fact, I would say the three neighbors to the left and right of me, along with myself, have eight elementary school students in our four homes. That's because new construction tends to attract, you know, families with young children, and those young children go into our school systems, which are already very crowded. So allowing for more homes to come into a smaller plot of land is just going to continue to overcrowd those school systems. Additionally, this specific intersection, which is right near Vaughn Road, there have been a lot of concerns raised around Vaughn Road. I realize we don't control whether or not there's a stoplight there on Highway 9, but that is an intersection that's very dangerous. It's difficult for the school buses that my kids ride, they have to make a left-hand turn. Traffic is backed up there. There's, you know, continued development down in Alpharetta, south of us, and all of that's contributing to traffic, and it's going to continue to increase and get worse over time. So the more homes we continue to add, the more we, you know, add to that problem as well. So for all those reasons, I would request that, that you all deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. City, if you'd please call the next speaker.
We have three public comment cards left and 28 seconds for the 10 minutes.
Okay. I'll be willing to add some more time if council's okay with that.
Five more minutes?
Let's add six minutes, and then we'll see where we're at there. Do I have a motion to add six minutes to time?
Some of it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? That's unanimous.
And our next speaker is Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I reside at 255 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia 30004. I'm here this evening speaking into the record specifically for the purpose of requesting that you deny RZ 17-02 at 12-800-12830 and 12-850-HOPWELLROAD. This rezoning should be denied for a variety of reasons, and I'll enumerate some of those. As already noted by staff, they're recommending denial of this rezoning. It is inconsistent with a variety of different items as enumerated by staff, and their staff analysis is thorough, and it repeats all of the reasons to deny. Additionally, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to deny this rezoning. They too spoke into the record during their meetings and noted and enumerated all of the reasons to deny. The density proposed does not meet the required one acre minimum, and it is in direct conflict with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The 2035 Future Land Use Plan map recommends that this subject site be developed as agricultural, equestrian, and estate residential. This requires one unit per acre and one acre lots. Not 16,000, not 17,000, not 22,000 acre lots, but 43,560 square foot lots, period. This rezoning is in direct conflict with these requirements and therefore should be denied. This land is not sewored and is intended to remain non-sewored. To increase the density as proposed by the zoning, rezoning request would be, would be an extension of sewer, which is in direct conflict with the updated Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the community, the commitment of you or elected officials to hold the line on sewer extension, and not to increase density where the Comprehensive Land Use Plan does not allow for it. Furthermore, as was, as was stated during staff's analysis, the removal of significant specimen trees is yet another reason to deny this rezoning request. The fact that 219 trees of a four-inch caliper would be required to recompense is clear evidence that there's too much stuff, too many houses, too much density being posed and placed on too few acres. A deferral is not going to cure the ills that have been enumerated by staff, by the Planning Commission, by residents that are adjacent, as well as others that will speak. We ask that you please deny this for all the reasons stated. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. City, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Laura Bentley.
Okay, how much time do I have? And who else has to talk?
You've got four minutes, and I just have one to read into the record card.
All right. Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. Ditto, ditto, and ditto. I'm gonna just skip through and say the subject site has a reasonable AG1 use. 1.16 units per acre is inconsistent with the AEE designation per the club. 17 lots on 14.6 acres, which has several lots under 18,000 square feet with a dry lake that is most likely not economic to develop. So developed as AG1, you can bet we are looking at eight or nine homes. Okay? So please pay attention to the overcrowded schools. Cogburn, Hopewell, Cambridge. Every single one of those schools is overcrowded, so one unnecessary home would be irresponsible. Planning Commission, the CZIM was well attended. Planning Commission, 7O, and staff has recommended denial, so this needs to be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City, if you'll call or read in the last comment.
This is the la, last public comment card. Jeffrey Lutterman did not want to speak, but he did want this read into the record. I am in opposition to this rezoning, and he lives at 12922 Donegal Lane, Milton, Georgia.
Okay. I will close the public hearing then. Where are we on time?
In support has six minutes left, and in opposition has three minutes.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments for staff or from the applicant from the council? Or would they, I believe the applicant would have the ability to, for any rebuttal of, of time if they would like. And, and point of order, just to close the public hearing, so should I? And point of order, just to close the public hearing, so should I?
You should announce reopening it to have the rebuttal and then...
Okay. I'll open the public hearing back. I'll have a motion in a second from the council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And again, I apologize, just proceduralizing, I want to make sure I'm...
I understand.
Right.
Just in closing, the applicants, both who are City of Milton residents, longtime property owners, have requested a deferral to see if we can find a little more common ground. I would really appreciate, and they would also, that chance. You know, if we can't, it's just the loss of one month. But if we can make it work, I think that benefits everyone. I don't think we're infringing on anybody's rights to just allow us another chance to run it through. The problem is, I have two applicants, and it's not always on the same table as you can all imagine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
A question for the applicant. Could you show us on the map your site plan where the sanitary sewer is?
So the manholes are enumerated. Sewer line runs from Vaughn Drive. It's the Vaughn Drive Outfall. It's on the southern extreme here against the street. It comes up and goes through, if you're following my finger. This was a condemnation outfall line. The government-assisted housing on Vaughn Drive had an oxidation pond. I don't know how many of you have been here for 50 years. The oxidation pond fails. Fulton County Health Department condemned that oxidation pond, and this is an outfall. All of the sewer, all the other neighborhoods runs through this sewer line. There's a forest mine along Hopewell Road, and of course, Hickory Crest. So it's four-sided, surrounded by sewer, plus the sewer line through the property.
So there's manhole, obviously, in that line.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six manholes of that property.
So that area is, in fact, sewored?
Yes, it has been sewored since 1987 or eight.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Rick?
Just a question. If this was outright denied, what's the impact on the applicant coming forward to redevelop? Is there a lock on time? Or can they come back and actually request development? Or I guess they wouldn't even have to come to us if they did it within AG1. So the question is, what's the impact procedurally, if we deny it, on the development of this property? Does it lock it up for a period of time?
It would be, do you know? I don't have a count for me whether it's six or 12.
If this petition is denied, it's a year, but if he comes back with a substantially different development or proposal, it can be six months. But you're correct, if he wants to do an AG1, by right, he could do an AG1.
But they, are you saying if it was denied, it would actually, it would lock that even coming forward for AG1 for six months?
No. What I said is that it would, they could go ahead and do AG1, but if they wanted to do another version of a rezoning, that would be minimum six months.
Six months.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else question staff? Anybody? Okay.
Has there been a, I mean, I don't know the answer to this. Has there been any kind of a soil protest on this project?
No, because of the sewer being there and the mandatory connection for the health state and county. It's, if we build one house per the health department requirements, we have to tie to sewer. It's because there is sewer on the property, and the guidelines are such that from a health... It's just like tying in, if you have public water, the chance of you getting a well are very, very slim. You're tied to the public sewer.
Is there, it may not be fair to ask Paul, since you're filling in, but, or on our staff, to clarify that. I know, because that is a big issue. You know, number one, I think the real reason here, the actuals, is less density. Now, sometimes sewer is used for that, but the reality is, if you built less density, whether it's sewored or septic, it really doesn't matter. But is there anyone on staff that can clarify? Because we do talk about a sewored area and not-sewored area and extending sewer or not. But I am aware, if you have an AG1 development that has no sewer, you could put, you know, or you put, use septic tanks, but if there was sewer on there, that the county will, the health department will force you to tie to that sewer. Do you have any...
Carter, I think that's probably a question for you.
Yeah, and I don't know if Fulton County Health Department can go against our service delivery strategy with the county and what's properties are sewored or not. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Robin, do you have?
I asked that question of Ken the other week, the specific question. How does the health department rules conflict with our intergovernment agreement? And what Carter said was correct, that the intergovernment agreement trumps the health department. And in this particular piece, even though we didn't discuss it in the, in the report, in the intergovernment agreement map, it is a color that indicates existing sewer, but no additional taps into it, i.e., it even acknowledges there could be existing sewer on the property, but the intergovernment agreement states in this particular piece that there should not be additional taps put into the sewer, so, or extended, even within the parcel, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Now I'll open up for motion. Joe? Yeah, well, at the bottom of this request, at the bottom of this, is a citizen in the City of Milton, not only a citizen that's been here recently, somebody that's been here a long, long time. And so I have a problem just outright denying something when they're still trying to work through potential issues. And so my motion is to defer till May and allow the applicant time to put something together that, like in the applicant's words or the representative's words, might be more palatable to the council. And normally, I don't like kicking the can down the road, but in this particular case, I think it's appropriate. Okay. I have a motion for a deferral for one month. Yes. Till the next zoning meeting, which I think we stated before, what, that?
15th.
May 15th.
That's not even a month.
And a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Is there any discussion here?
I would just say, I think it's been our policy in the past that if an applicant requests deferral, that we grant them that deferral in hopes of them being able to work with the community and work out a project that everybody can agree on as for the betterment of it. So, I mean, I think a deferral actually makes sense in this situation. It may not, it may be just kicking the can down the road for three weeks, and it may end up getting denied if they can't come up with anything any better. But I still believe that in the past, we have chosen to defer it in hopes that they can work something out.
Okay. And, you know, the one thing I might suggest, too, the applicant may want to clarify, too, with the information we have on the sewer, that may kind of tend to allow that property to be developed, you know, exactly like the AG1 requirements, too. So I want to clarify that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 17-03 to amend section 64-418, pre-development notification and public informational meeting, and section 64-419, definitions of the AG1 Agricultural Zoning District, agenda item number 17087. First presentation was at the April 10 meeting and discussed at the April 17 council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this petition and the subsequent 1, 2, 3, 3 others really all relate to the same thing, and that is that the purpose of this text amendment is to delete the required pre-development notification and public informational meeting that is currently required after a concept plan submitted. With your vote tonight to change Chapter 50 for the planning commission, that function will now be taken up by the planning commission. Therefore, this process has become moot, and because it's embedded in each of the residential zoning districts, we had to go in and modify each one. So I will be saying the same thing essentially for this one and for the following three.
Okay. We'll listen, we'll hear each item separately and vote on them. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions for Kathy on this? And if not, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-087.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Kuntz, and from Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 17-04 to amend section 64-141, pre-development notification and public informational meeting, and section 64-442, definitions of the R1 Residential Zoning District, agenda item number 17088. First presentation was held on April 10 and discussed at the April 17 city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Same discussion as for the previous one.
Okay. Do you have any public comment on that?
We do not, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-088.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, and I believe a second from Councilmember Morick for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 17-05 to amend section 64-464, pre-development notification and public informational meeting, and section 64-465, definitions of the R2 Residential Zoning District, agenda item number 17089. First presentation was at the April 10 city council meeting and discussed at April 17 city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Same comment.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
There is not.
Close the hearing and open up for any questions.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-089.
Second motion.
All right, I'll open up for a motion. Councilmember Kuntz for approval with a second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, I want you to call the next item.
Consideration of RZ 17-06 to amend section 64-487, pre-development notification and public informational meeting, and section 64-488, definitions of the R2A Residential Zoning District, agenda item number 17090. First presentation at the April 10 city council meeting, Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, this is the same comment again.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
There is not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing, and any questions? If not, I'll open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-090.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Kuntz, and a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 17-07 to amend section 64-2453, creation of a historic preservation commission to allow compensation for meetings. Agenda item number 17091. First presentation was at the April 10 meeting and discussed on April 17 at the city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the historic preservation ordinance states that the HPC cannot receive any compensation. The purpose of this text amendment is to allow the HPC to receive compensation for attendance at each of their meetings based on the direction from the mayor and city council. And this action is consistent with the council's previous action in terms of awarding compensation for the other boards and commissions within the city.
Do we have any public hearing on that? A public comment?
No, we do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing, open up for questions or comments. Or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17-091.
Second.
091.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt with a second, I believe, from, was it Councilmember Kuntz?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We moved a couple items, so, Sudi, we'll move into new business. If you'll please call that item.
This item is consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Alpharetta and the City of Milton for a jointly-owned passive park, agenda item number 17098. Mr. Paul Fricki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is presented to you in the same form that was previously presented to you at the session. It is a memorandum of agreement to essentially jointly purchase and operate a passive park with the City of Alpharetta. This, the details of the future obligations with respect to the park would be worked out in an intergovernmental agreement in the future. This is just memorandum of understanding to proceed with looking at the acquisition.
And to clarify that, this is just, as you say, just moving us forward with discussions.
Right.
Okay. Not obligating us to anything. Okay. Any questions? Or, now I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-098, consideration of a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Alpharetta and the City of Milton for a jointly-owned passive park.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurmond, and a second from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Well, that does not pass unanimous. Joe Roy is not here, so it's six to zero. Okay. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration and ratification of the final comprehensive service delivery strategy with Fulton County and all municipalities, agenda item number 17099. Mr. Paul Fricki.
I believe in my packet is the Exhibit B, in addition to a full, separate, and Exhibit A, which is the service delivery strategy forms with the county and other cities in Fulton County. It's a five-year process. It's been ongoing to update the service delivery strategies. I believe this is the final form, and this is seeking the city's approval so that it can be finalized.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 17-099.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the record, there was Councilmember Thurmond abstaining from voting, so, six to zero. All right, Sudi, if you'll say on the next item.
Next item is consideration of the following subdivision plat. Hanglewood Preserve, Phase 2, Revision 1, Land Lot 465 and 466, Tenerife Drive, Final Plat Revision, creating 14 lots, 25.32 total acres, .56 lots per acre. Agenda item number 17100. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. This is essentially a simple revision to this subdivision plat. And it shows the location of it. And basically, we're taking note establishing a mitigation area. Voice and the advice of council for the applicant that of these 14 lots, this mitigation area, which is essentially a conservation area, be shown on...
area, which is essentially a conservation area, be shown on, on the plat. And so that's what has been done here. That's really the only change to this plat, is to show this yellow line.
Any questions? Open up for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Seventeen one hundred.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for approval with a second from Councilmember Kuntz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, and I believe there were seven people that voted on that one. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the final, new business item.
This is consideration of a professional services agreement between Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon, Inc., and the City of Milton for an update to the citywide parks and recreation master plan and the master plan for Providence Park. Agenda Item Number seventeen one zero-one. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you have a contract with Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon, organization that we have selected of staff to help us with the update of the master plan. The last master plan was created in 2011. It was adopted in 2012, a five-year master plan. Lot has changed in the setting, so it's time to update that plan. Also included in that project is a focus to do a master plan on Providence Park itself. The city did let out an RFQ in December of 2016. Responses were due and received in January. There was a committee formed to grade the proposals. There were seven responses. Three were selected for further evaluation. From there, the staff made the recommendation for Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon. And we'd like to ask your support on that. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you at this time.
Any questions for Jim Craig? No? Bill?
Jim, have they done anything here, in this area?
I believe Barge, I'm gonna go to Carter in this, but I believe Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon has been doing work for the city in, already.
They've done some bridge evaluation work for us.
That's right.
I will also add that Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon did merge with an organization called JB plus A, which gave them a landscaping presence here in the Atlanta marketplace, and they are well-known in the Georgia marketplace for the work that they've done. I actually was able to reach out to multiple agencies that have used JB plus A and check up on differences, and I, I didn't just get thumbs up, I got like outstanding thumbs up.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number, number is this?
Seventeen one one.
Seventeen dash one oh-one. Consideration of a professional service agreement between Barge, Wagner, Sumner, and Cannon, Inc., and the City of Milton for an update to the citywide parks and recreation master plan and the master plan for Providence Park.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurmond, a second by Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you all very much. Before I step aside, I would like to just make sure all of you are aware that this Wednesday is the opening of Golden Games, and once again, Bell Memorial Park is honored to have featured that opening. Mr. Mayor, we're hoping you'll be able to join us for the mayor's challenge. Did recover the trophy from Senator Beach today, but he made it clear he intends to win back. Knowing that you were a winner two years ago, I'm counting on you to bring it back to Milton.
All right.
Okay.
That was the egg toss I think I won.
Yes, he did. It was the egg shuttle run.
Egg shuttle.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I think I lost the year before to the hula hoops with Mayor Wood.
Yes, yes.
Hate to say I wasn't a good hula hoop. Maybe I'm glad I said that.
I will let you know that Mayor Woods actually contacted me today to let me know he will not be able to participate. So, you know, hopefully, bring it back to Milton.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Okay. One other thing too, I want to mention, next, next Saturday is the, the grand opening and celebration for our new city hall. So, you know, we hope to see everybody there and let everybody know, so.
I've got a question on that.
All right.
Can you, can you get tickets at the door for that, for the, as well?
Yes, yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay. Karen?
I just want to say that I came by here on Saturday, Thursday, spent a little time with Atilla the tortoise, and it was a good turnout. It was a beautiful day on Saturday, much better than it was on Sunday, and it looked like everyone that had came was having a very good time. Even Atilla the tortoise.
All right, anybody else? Now I will conclude this meeting, and we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.